Here. Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior.
Here.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Present online.
Austin Watkins Senior.
All.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Present.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Here.
Ella Giancarlo. George Dreamer Junior.
Present.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Here.
Richard Ironcloud.
Here.
David Puer.
Here.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Here.
Jackie Sears. She's excused. Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
Counselor, there's seventeen members present. Too absent and too excused, thank you, Secretary. So, I know that we had Dr. Jumpin Eagle here for the report, but I think as part of my report. Bryce, are you on?
Yes, President, I'm here.
Okay. So, I guess we can have Bryce present some of the items and Councilman, if you want to kind of help reference, if there's any questions or anything like that that come up. And I know Councilwoman Whitehorse has been aware of this as well, but Bryce, if you want to present, that would be good.
Yeah, for sure. Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Awesome. Thanks again for having me, President and Tribal Council today. Very excited to present to you guys what we've been talking about with most of the council and President, and how we're going to help the Okalas Lakota Nation citizens in a, on the Salesforce platform by, you know, signing up for different benefits and programs offered by the Okalas Sioux Tribe Government. As I go through this presentation, feel free to ask me questions. Happy to answer any. But just to start, this is your Okalas Sioux Tribe team here at Salesforce. Tectonic will be the implementation partner implementing the portal, I like to say, laying down the foundation on the Salesforce platform. So, think of Salesforce as the lumber and Tectonic is building the house. In this reference, it's laying down the portal and actually building the portal. This is from our legal. Basically, it just states that everything that I'm going to be talking today about is commercially available. If not, I will definitely let you guys know, but everything we're going to be talking about today is available with the Salesforce licenses. So, to start off, the current tribal customers we work with today, obviously, the Cherokee Nation is probably our biggest, then the Musquegee Creek Nation, located in Oklahoma, about ninety thousand strong. The Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina, all the way down to the Hopi Tribe within Arizona. I like this slide because it states, you know, we work with the biggest tribes to the smallest tribes as well. We work on the government side, the health side, as well as the casino side, so we can be that one-stop-shop solution for all of those different, I would say, pillars under the Okalas Sioux Tribe. So, with the Cherokee Nation, we started off with their COVID-19 application. So, basically, tracking everybody within, on the reservation within Cherokee Nation who had COVID, who was around them, and who was potentially exposed, and notifying those individuals. Once we got that contact tracing application up and running, we actually moved to the government side, where we actually built them a COVID assistance application to disperse $2,000 assistance to every Cherokee Nation citizen. So, they're able to go through what they call the Kadugie Portal, which is their Salesforce portal, their citizen portal, and be able to apply for these assistance. The big thing is Cherokee Nation is about 400,000 citizens strong. Not every citizen lives on the reservation. So, with Salesforce, you're able to access it anytime, anywhere, on any device. So, just like an Okalas Sioux Tribe with your 46,000 citizens strong. Not everyone lives on the reservation, but they're able to access the portal at any time. You know, if they're, you know, in a different state, in a different country, they're able to access it on their mobile phone, tablet, laptop. So, they're able to, you know, be able to interact with the Okalas Sioux Tribe Government just through the portal. So, it's very nice because they're not going into the office anymore exposing staff with COVID. They don't have to download PDFs, mail it in anymore. Everything is submitted through the Kadugie Portal for the Cherokee Nation today. Any questions around our work with Cherokee Nation?
I don't see any. Councilman Carlo, but...
Morning Bryce, Mike Carlo.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, are you gonna do any type of presentation on, you know, what the training is and how long that's gonna take, you know, for for the individuals that we're gonna be utilizing?
Yeah, for sure. So, Tectonic actually trains the departments that we're going to be identifying first on the portal. Salesforce is very user-friendly. It's all clicks, no coding at all. So, I'll give you a little reference. I was a history major when I was in college. I had no tech, I would say, tech savvy or tech background. I'm able to build my own reports and create my own dashboards here at Salesforce because it's all clicks and not code. So, at first, I would say, so Tectonic's gonna be training all the departments that are going to be on this portal. But once you start getting, you know, down and dirty with Salesforce, it's very easy to pick up because everything is just clicks. But training is included. To answer your question, Mike, training is included with the cost that Tectonic has provided.
Councilman Jumpin Eagle.
Good morning Bryce.
Hey, Ryan, what's up, man?
Hey, so, I know there was talk about doing a cost share for startup with housing.
Yes.
I just talked to Ramon and he said they think they can do it. They can cover the whole costs, and that wasn't the discussion. The discussion was to have them and also the tribe, you know, pay that startup cost to get this going.
Yep.
And I think, if I remember correctly, Cora said that, you know, the programs that use this, they can also share in the cost once it gets going, I think.
Yeah. Here, let me show you real quick. You're beating me to it. One second. Let me pull this up. So, exactly what you said. So, if rental assistance doesn't want to obviously take on all the first-year cost. So, I think we've identified about, so, in the Tectonic costs, about five applications. Rental assistance is one. COVID assistance is another one. LIHEAP, the LIHEAP assistance is another one. So, you can actually pull from these different funding sources. If you're putting rental assistance, you're putting LIHEAP from the Energy Department, from the Housing Department, to fund the first-year cost. We also have what they just released over at Department of Treasury, the LATCF, which is the Local Assistance and Tribal Citizenship Fund. LATCF, basically, each tribe that submits gets about $3 million for the next two years. You're able to use that $3 million for anything but lobbying services. On page one of the guidance that I can send over to you guys, it actually states that you can use this towards technology to better your citizen interaction with the government. But to answer your question, Ryan, yes, you can pull from different funding sources. The more programs you put on the portal, the more funding sources you can pull from, is what I like to say. I see there's two hands up. Cora Mason.
Okay. Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Thank you. I, could you explain what it is exactly? I mean, I know that in this era of social media, everybody knows how to use their phone and get online. But it, the Salesforce Portal is basically an app that any tribal member can access? Does it need to be a tribal member to access the app?
Correct. Cora, so, it is an application that you can access on your tablet, on your mobile device. To sign into the portal, here's what the Musquegee Creek Nation login page is. Basically, to register, you have to put your citizen ID and then your social security number to verify that you are a Okalas, let's just say, a Musquegee Creek Nation citizen. By identifying that, we have connected to their enrollment system to validate that this is a true Musquegee Creek Nation citizen. So, once they are in there and they're validated, they will create their own username and password. So, they'll use that to log in through the application to get to all the applications associated with the Musquegee Creek Nation or the Cherokee Nation. So, it would be the same process for Okalas Sioux Tribe. It's basically identifying their road number, their citizen ID, their SSN, and validating that they are an Okalas Sioux Tribe member. And then they'll create their username and password, and they're going to be able to log in. And if I, Bryce Sutherland, if I try to log into the Okalas Sioux Tribe Portal, I'm not going to be able to because I am not an Okalas Sioux Tribe citizen. So, it validates it on the backend.
Councilwoman Whitehorse. Okay. Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning Bryce. This is Sonia Little Hawk Weston, Tribal Council. I did remember you came on a while you did come on a while back and you did give this presentation. I did have, at that time, I did ask some questions. And now that you're here in front of the Tribal Council and you're giving the presentation, you know, you know, it really sounds good as to what your business could do based on setting up the portals for different programs. And, you know, right now, today, I do know that our tribe does have a portal that has been set up for our ARPA pay bits. We've had one set up for our vaccine incentives. Just recently, we set one up for our school assistants to help our tribal members, our families. And so, it kind of almost sounds like you're almost doing the same thing as setting up these portals for different things. And I do know you, it was going to cost around $139,000 to set up. There's probably going to be some more cost behind it. I'm assuming that's going to happen. But as you listed your number of programs, I want to know, you know, I think our Chair of the HHS Committee just mentioned something about the housing. You know, I do know that we were at that point going to see if housing, Okalas Lakota housing could pick up that cost. You're talking about ICDBG funds. I think that every program has a budget, and they do receive funds. And you're talking about, yes, we can probably, it kind of almost sounds like a cost share. Because you're going to, if we're going to use different programs, are we going to be charging those programs to set up a something portal for them? You know, for each one of them. And you're going to get a payment off of each of these programs. Is kind of what I'm understanding on this presentation. Is that what you're doing?
No. So, basically, my payment is a whole. The cost share would be determined on the tribe, where you guys are going to pull these. So, if, let's say, Energy has twenty individuals using Salesforce, so they would have twenty licenses. And let's just say that costs 20K. You would go to Energy and say, Energy, you know, you pay 20K because that's your cost on Salesforce. You know, rental assistance, they have twenty individuals. That's 20K. So, it's actually up to the tribe on how you guys are going to fund this. But this is just more of a, I would say, a blueprint that I've seen with other nations and other tribes, what they're doing today by putting different programs on. They're basically asking those programs for funds that are grant funds. So, that's kind of where I go in and I kind of, you know, educate in a way different tribes on what Cherokee Nation, Musquegee Creek Nation, and other tribes that we're working with today, how they're pulling the funds and keeping quote-unquote "the lights on" for Salesforce. Because Salesforce is a subscription-based model. Just think of it like a magazine. It's a yearly fee.
Okay. And my second question is, you know, you have, you know, all of these entities listed that you can do, set up these portals, and you do say casinos. So, you know, we do have a casino, and, you know, I really don't want to force something on some of our programs or, you know, our entities within the tribe to say, you're going to use Salesforce. We're going to set up a portal for each one of you. They, like I said, they all have a budget. They all have to say whether or not they can even go there. But again, I don't want the tribe as a council to say, well, we're going to pass this and have you do it. So, when you're saying, well, it's going to be up to the tribe to figure out how they're going to fund this, fund Salesforce to do this, you know, setting up these portals. You know, I guess that's something that I would like to probably hear from our Treasurer because I think he is on. And I really don't want to, you know, force anybody to do anything. Although it sounds really good, I really, you gave the presentation at one of the meetings. I did kind of hear some of it, and I did ask some questions at that time. So, just to let you know, you know, we are a very large reservation, you know, very decentralized, large land base. I don't know how the Cherokee Nation, you know, how they're set land-based wise. But we are very spread out.
Yeah.
And we have offices in all of our nine districts that, you know. So, we need to really think about this as a council to see how we can, you know, if this is really feasible or not for our, I guess we're really looking at is our tribal entities.
Yeah, and we're not, I mean, Salesforce is not coming in enforcing, I would say, anybody to, you know, take on the portal. That's, again, that's up to the tribe. So, but if one department is happy with the system, Salesforce is an open API system. So, that just, that basically means that we can talk to any other system. So, if, let's say, I don't know, the Housing Department has a specific system that they don't want to replace, but they want Salesforce data to actually go into that system and vice versa, that system send data to Salesforce, you're able to do that as well. So, you know, we can talk to any other system. We don't have to rip and replace every system within the Okalas Sioux Tribe or every department. Salesforce plays nice in a way. But, you know, with the applications that you mentioned, that we would start with, the big thing about Salesforce, and I'm not sure about your current portal that you guys have set up, but you're able to track all that data. So, obviously, here, let me show you. Once it's submitted, they get this 360-degree view of that citizen and that information. They're able to track it on dashboards, too. So, they're able to see kind of how many cases or how many applications have been submitted in last day, in the last week, in the last year. They're able to see, you know, how many, how much money has been dispersed per that application. And then also how much money have remaining. And again, that's all within the Salesforce platform. They're able to dig down deep into the data, and they're able to, you know, track all the activity. Or, you know, if some of the individuals on the reservation are not so tech savvy, and they want to call into the department, the department leads able to actually apply for that individual by up these buttons up here, the Apply for ERP, the Utility Assistance. So, when it comes to our portal, I would say, getting that 360-degree view of that information as well as those dashboards and pulling those reports within seconds is what really, I would say, makes us, you know, the number-one grants application slash case management application or even portal out there in the industry.
Okay, thank you. And just one, I'm going to have some more questions on the road here, but I just wanted to say one thing. You know, right now, you know, we have tribal members, I think our Treasurer mentioned, is that, you know, there might be somebody out there that might, you know, apply for one of these, like, say, whether it's the ARPA or whatever fund it is, you know, might not be the right person.
Yeah.
You know, might be someone that's using somebody's name or enrollment number. How are you going to work directly with our tribe? Because it's our tribe that kind of knows a lot of our tribal members. So, how do you, you as Salesforce, going to catch that? Is somebody, you're going to have some that's going to work directly with the tribe to say, to catch some of these things?
So, what happens is, do you guys have, I think you guys use a current enrollment system. Do you guys use Prodigy by chance?
I don't know what they use.
Okay.
But they do, they do, I think, work directly with the tribe, the enrollment office. And the other part of this is the data collection that you're going to be doing. You know, you're going to, all of that data will belong to the Okalas Sioux Tribe.
Correct.
Right? You don't keep nothing from the tribe.
Correct. Yes. Your data is your data. Like, it's never Salesforce's, it's never Tectonic's. It's Okalas Sioux Tribe's data. When you guys, if you guys ever decide to go off Salesforce, that's still going to be your data. We actually just populate into a CSV file, and then that data is always OST. Salesforce can never see your data or keep your data. To, for an enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
And can you share too how much the paper costs that you save?
Oh, yes.
Cherokee Nation.
Yes, yes, yes. So, we did an ROI with Cherokee Nation. And sorry that I'm skipping through this all. So, we did a ROI, so a return on investment with Cherokee Nation. And so, in year one, they saw, they saved about 79% of ROI, all the way down to 216% by year five. What does this mean? So, obviously, before they moved on to the Salesforce portal, they were spending a lot on paper, on mail. And so, what we did was, per application, we figured out how much money they would be saving. So, on a small, medium, large scale. So, that large application, obviously, is that COVID assistance. It's, you know, almost every member of Cherokee Nation signing in through the portal to apply for the $2,000 COVID assistance. They were saving $4 million on that one application alone by cutting back mail and paper-based processes. A medium application was 1.5 million, and then a small application is $85,000. So, they really saw that return on investment by moving to Salesforce because they're not paying, they're only paying a one-time or yearly fee, and then a one-time cost on the implementation. And they saved about $4 million each large application. So, that's where they really saw that ROI by moving off of the paper-based process and mail.
Okay, thank you. So, I got Councilman Carlo, Councilman Jumpin Eagle, Councilman Spotted Bear, then I think Treasurer Big Roll.
Hey Bryce, you kind of touched on it, but, I mean, can we just get to how these are going to benefit each individual program that's in there? Based on information, if we're applying for a grant, we can pull all this data up. We can complete a grant application in a short period of time. Hit on some of the benefits, how it's going to benefit each program.
Yeah, and I can talk about Musquegee Creek Nation in specific. So, before they moved to Salesforce for their rental assistance program, they were doing everything on paper. And to apply, obviously, you had to go through an office or print out a PDF, mail it into the offices over at Musquegee Creek Nation. And it took about three to four months to, once you've turned into your application, to get approved and to receive that money. And in rental assistance, obviously, you're applying for that because you can't pay rent. And if you can't pay rent, you're eventually going to be kicked out of your house. So, it's pretty critical. When they moved to Salesforce, they actually, it went from four months from the beginning of the application to approve, to receive the money, all the way down to two weeks. So, citizens were a lot more happy, to say the least, by cutting down those four months to two weeks. They were getting their rental assistance money faster. The processes were smoother. I think, maybe it was you, Sonia, in our housing meeting, it really made the department accountable for, you know, getting these assistance to these citizens faster. So, it cuts down, obviously. And then, it also doesn't have your citizens calling in all the time, asking for the money anymore. They, on the portal, there's actually a status. Once they submit their application, there's a status of pending, you know, approve, denied. Why are they denied? What's great, too, it's like an Amazon process. If you order anything from Amazon, you get a confirmation number. And, you know, it's out to delivery, and then it's delivered to your house. Same thing with Salesforce is, when your citizens apply for an application, they will get a confirmation number to their email or to their mobile phone, a text message. They will get, once it's moved into the different statuses, if it's approved, if it's denied, they'll get that information in real time, in seconds, once you move the stage. So, they're always in the know. They don't have to call your call center anymore or your departments. They know that, you know, this application's submitted, and it's approved, and it's coming into my bank account, you know, here in the next couple of days. We also can integrate with your financial system, if you guys have an ERP. So, you can actually grab that information once it is submitted to that financial system. So, you can validate that, yes, this individual has been paid. But to, to note Mike's question, yes, it cut down a lot of time for the application once it's submitted, and then once the citizen received the payment.
Thank you. Councilman Jumpin Eagle? Okay. Councilwoman Spotted Bear, then I think Treasurer Big Roll.
Thank you, Chair. So, in regards to Salesforce, and if you were to apply it to a context as an example, and how we can utilize this, and this is just for our public that's listening, no different than when you log into your bank account from your phone, that gives the accessibility to our people to be able to have ease of access or streamline reports when it comes to monthly reports. We can also provide those same reports to our district executive boards for our monthly meetings as well. I guess my question would be, would, in regards to redundancy, because always our privacy, we want to protect it, and our data collection, we want to protect that and preserve it. What is your, what does Salesforce have to offer for redundancy?
For security?
More so for backup security, and then also for data security.
Oh, yes, yes. So, when it comes to backup, we have about 20 years of backup. So, we have a lot of archived data within Salesforce that you can keep. As well, we're actually with the Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina, we're building their enrollment system. So, those family trees, you know, are, their lineages are hundreds of years old. You're able to track that all in Salesforce, and the backup is always there. So, you're never going to lose any data within Salesforce. You're always going to be backed up. When it comes to security, we're PII, HIPAA, out of the box. We also meet every federal requirement. We're FederantPI, which only a couple of software companies out there are FederantPI. We're FederantPI, which only a couple of software companies out there are FederantPI. Um, so, and then we are IL4 for DOD. Um, so three letter agencies here in Washington DC use Salesforce. So we are the highest secure cloud out there. So security is, um, it's, it's covered with Salesforce.
Thank you. I know this is thing that we have discussed in the past in regards to. How can we have ease of access for our information and then also information flow for our, our public to utilize or even to see? Because we put a lot of information out and if they had an ease of access to be able to get on their phone or their computer from home and. See what, you know, are, their application looks like or their process in, in where the processes with their application. That would be a huge benefit to our people. But part is the security of the data collection.
Yeah.
Uh, so thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. And I know, so with Salesforce too, there's two-way, um, uh, authentication. So if, if I try to sign, if I have, um, um, Cora's information and I try to sign in. It will ping Cora's, um, email or phone that I'm trying to sign in. And it, uh, either she can accept it or deny it. Obviously, she's gonna deny it because she thinks she's not signing in, I'm signing in. So there's another layer of security within Salesforce that, no, not, uh, if, if I grab Cora's information, I can't just sign in. She's gonna have to let me in. Um, so just like your bank accounts and all that, um, when, when you're signing into your bank accounts. Same thing with Salesforce. There's two-way, uh, authentication as well.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, uh, Treasure Big Girl.
Good morning, uh, Bryce. I remember talking to you a while back about, uh, you know, some of this stuff. Um, que- question on, on this, uh, for integration. You know, we, uh, for the financials, you know, some of the things we, we'll need is actually, and I don't know how housing would do it on their end. Um, we would need a, uh, some sort of checklist for our auditors to go through. Cause if, if this, uh, software is going to, uh, allow, I guess, payments. This and that in, in, integrate into our MIP system here. Uh, you know, our auditors are gonna need some sort of checklist to look for. And of course, the security for each one of the programs. I know the tribe does not have the, uh, uh, control over the ERAP program. But we do have control over some of the other programs, especially the BIA, which is the, uh, the app. And I know the, um, uh. And the other one I was thinking about was the, uh, higher education. Uh, what else was there? There's a whole list of ones that I, I, uh, was talking about. But, um, you know, are you guys gonna be, be able to, uh, uh, give us that? Those, that information for the, you know, for us to, when, when we decide if we're going to use this and integrate those programs. Um. Are you guys gonna help us do that? Are you guys gonna do any of that stuff? Or are you guys just gonna kinda, cause you said it's up to the tribe? You know, we're gonna pay for so much users and so much, uh, uh, you know, programs to be using this.
Yeah, so, uh, Tectonic, actually the implementation partner, would actually go through, uh, kind of a, uh, a workflow roadmap session with. Uh, integrating with your, um, financial systems. Um, so they would actually work with you guys, um, hand in hand to actually integrate with those financial systems. Um, so what's great about Salesforce is the licenses are open API. So out of the box, they can go integrate with your, your financial system. Um, so there's no cost there with, with Salesforce. Uh, we're get, we can, uh, talk to your financial system as well. Your financial system can send back confirmations that this individual has been paid. Um, and here's his confirmation number and stuff like that. Um, but yeah, it would be kind of a, uh, Tectonic working with the tribe or to those different departments. And being able to integrate, uh, with that financial system. Um, and again, it's up to the tribe on which, which systems we wanna integrate with, right? So if it's, um, the overall financial system, we can definitely do that. If you guys want to kinda do that in like a phase two, phase three and just set up the portal and get the applications going, we can do that as well. It all depends on what you guys wanna do.
Okay, so for the tribe right now, we're, we're getting close to our sunset period for, uh, both our, uh, um. The, uh, incentive and then the, uh, the, um, two thousand dollar incentive. I think both the deadlines are ending except, uh, December thirty-first. And on September thirtieth, we're actually ending the, uh, school close one.
Okay.
So I, I'm guessing after that, you know, we, we would need the help with the other, the other programs if we're gonna utilize those. But the, the cost, what, what I seen, you know. And, and then you mentioned that, the twenty users per, let's say like the app, you have that on, you have it on here. Um, we do have other, uh, some of these programs that you have on there, we don't actually have. Um, but we do have. You scroll through the other one, remember you had the other ones, you had like the app, you had those other ones that were listed on there.
Oh, yes, that's, um, so what's great about Salesforce, just think of it, uh, like a, like a blank slate, I would say. Uh, whatever programs you want on there, we can build. Um, so, um, what, what's the big thing is. Um, laying down the foundation takes about six to eight weeks. Once we lay down the foundation, um, creating applications takes days, maybe a week. Um, so we're able to spin up a lie heap application within a week. Uh, we're able to spin up a COVID assistance application within a couple of days. Um, so that, the laying that, the foundation, I would say is, is the, is the tall ask, six to eight weeks. But standing up these applications afterwards, very, very minimum. Uh, it takes, again, days, maybe a week to start setting these up.
Okay, so another question too is that, so we have districts right now that, uh, they do, uh, assistance at their. At their level.
Yeah.
You have their own bank account, they do have their own approval systems. Um, and is that something that you, you'll also help them with?
Yeah, so, uh, we can be able to help them with, uh, as well, if, if, if they're collecting that information. Um, and they wanna store it in, in, in one, I would say, a data repository like Salesforce. And then integrate it to whatever financial system they're setting that to. Um, so yeah, we can help them with that as well.
And is that gonna be included? So. So what I, I, what I gathered today is there, uh, it's on the council for approval for, to use, use you guys for the. The amount that's been, uh, sent over to us. What was that, three hundred and some thousand?
Yeah, so that is the licenses. Um, so, um, I think with that, that's fifty licenses, uh, so fifty users. Um, and then on the implementation side, which is the Tectonic side, that is enrollment. So creating, uh, if you guys want, creating an enrollment application like we did at, um, Lumbee Tribe. Um, and then, uh, five different applications. And we've identified, uh, and those five applications could be any application, by the way. Um, we've identified though, the lie heap application, the rental assistance, the COVID assistance, uh, the Ogallala, um. Uh, hemp regulatory commission, which is, um, a licensing application to standing up, um, different, uh, dispensaries with. On the reservation and then actually, you know, doing permitting and inspecting those, those rest, uh, those dispensaries. Um, and then there's about one or two other applications that we haven't identified. So if, if there's one out there, um, or two, uh, we can actually put on the portal as well. So there's two applications that we still need to figure out that, um, we need to identify to put on the portal. But those are the ones that we've talked about so far.
Okay, so who did you talk to about this? I mean, cause there's things on there, like the hemp actually is just a hemp thing. We also have the marijuana commission.
Yeah.
That might be the different one. Um, like I mentioned, the, uh, the, um, students down here, uh, the, the Johnson O'Malley program.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's all the other programs that we have. We even have the, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of other programs that we have that can probably utilize this, but.
Yeah. Yes, so this is like, this is the marijuana slash hemp. Um, I just put hemp, so I apologize for that. Um, been working with, um, uh, Ryan and, and Cora and some other, um, tribal council members. Just identifying kind of some, um, some use cases that we've seen with other tribes and stuff like that. Um, but, you know, we can definitely, I would say, figure out kind of which. And prioritize which applications that you guys wanna start with. Again, we were, we were just high level talking about the COVID assistance. Because, um, some people have still not been paid on COVID assistance is what I've heard. And they, you know, uh, um, submitted that, uh, application, uh, what, a year, two years ago. Um, the rental assistance, um, and then the lie heap application were ones that we've done in the past that. We thought would be pretty good applications to start with. Um, but if we wanna identify other applications, we can definitely do that, Mason. We would just sit down with you, um, and figure out kind of the process, the workflows, and then put that on the, uh, the portal.
Okay, so again, back to the cost then, is, so the council is gonna approve you today? Is that what the, what, what this is about then?
Uh, that's, that's the goal.
Yeah, okay. So, I, I'm sorry, Mason. I got other council members that have their hands up. Um, so I got Councilman White Horse and then Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Thank, uh, better service now, so. But, um, I, I wanted to, um, just explain a couple of things. Um, number one, this program can be designed to do what we need it to do. We put our own programs, we decide what needs to be on there. Number two, we don't want to force any program to do this. But to me, I see it as a service to these programs and to our tribal members. I mean, as large as our reservation is, it's hard to get gas to bring our applications to Pine Ridge. Especially when we live in Eagle Nest and, and Martin and Kyle. It's a long ways and gas is expensive. And we need to, we, we need to figure out a way to make these programs more accessible. To all of our tribal members, not just the people who are in the know. So if we had a program like this, then all of our members would have access right on their phone. Because almost everybody on the reservation has a phone or has access to a phone. Not everybody has a computer and not everybody has a car to drive to Pine Ridge. So, but they do have access to the internet at some point. And I think that when we're doing this, if we do this. It would, it would make things easier for our membership to apply for. Like energy. And, um, it would make it easier for the programs because of the dashboards. They would always have access as to who, who is there. Who has applied, if they need to add more information. And this isn't just about the COVID applications or the programs that came up under ARPA. It, it's about all of the programs that we have and that we will still have after. The ARPA money is gone. But our people will still need access to that. Our districts can be added and our districts all have applications for assistance. Those can all be put on this portal. When, when I'm, when, when I talk about providing a service, you know, every program pays IDC. And I did some research and to pay for this portal under IDC is allowable. And I understand that we would need to draft new policies for financial management and, and other policies. So we would need to review them before implementation actually takes place. But I think we need to step forward now. We need to step forward, move ahead because our people are passing us up. Our, and our systems are so antiquated. And, you know, all this paper shuffle, we should have learned one thing from all these COVID programs. This paper shuffle does not work. Everybody, when they bring in an application, is encouraged to make a copy and hold on to it. Just in case that paper gets lost. And it shouldn't be that way. We should be able to allow our, our members to apply for a program. And that it be on record somewhere that they have applied, that their application is being reviewed. And if they do get approved, that they have been approved and what steps are next. And if they're not approved, then they should know why. And right now, you send in an application and you wait and wait and wait and get frustrated. And then more frustrated. And then frustrated to the point where they're calling people and, and getting angry. And when we're providing a service, we should be providing the best service that we can in the most efficient way possible. And I think having this portal would be the first step in doing that. I, I understand that we have lots of tribal employees who are doing the best that they can. And, and I think it's our duty to try and help them to help our oyate. Because right now, what we're doing is not working. And we need to find a better solution. And I think moving up in our technology is going to be the best step forward. We, we did speak with Ramon at HHS and, and, um, he was going to get back and Ryan did say they would pay part of the startup. And I think we could use a part of our, that, um, application that Mason will be submitting. I don't know if he's submitted it yet or not, for the government assistance under ARPA for the startup. But I think in the future to continue this, because it will be a service to the programs. We can fund it with IDC. It, it, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a huge chunk when you consider the other things that we spend money on. And. I think that if each program has their own website, and Bryce, correct me if I'm wrong here. But we can provide a link in this portal to their websites, correct?
Correct, correct.
And, and we can still put their applications on our portal. So that way, they will always be tracked. And when we go to lobby and have to prepare reports on what our needs are, how many people applied. How many people actually got assistance, how much assistance we actually gave and what our real need is. We can pull that from this dashboard and prepare our reports and not have to wait and wait. And wait and maybe get the information from programs because they have to gather all that documentation. It would simplify things so much to do this, not only for our tribal members. But also for our programs and for us to help us lobby for more funding. I think that was all I wanted to get out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle. Okay, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, um. We, we've been twenty years behind in everything we've done around here. I mean, uh, in the eighties, we were still in the sixties and seventies. And we had two thousand, we're still living in the nineties and the eighties. And I think we need to catch up with the times and, and move forward with this. It's a good thing. It'll make life simpler. And like you said, not everybody's access to computer, but everybody's got a smartphone. And this will make it a lot easier and that way, uh, um, the, the Wambley Boys don't have to drive so far to get to Pine Ridge for paperwork and stuff. They can just get it online and get it to people and all these programs. So I think we should move forward with this. It's a good thing.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Little Hot Question?
Yeah, you know, I'm just thinking about, uh, just exactly what, uh, we're talking about, what, uh. White, Miss, uh, White Horse, Councilwoman White Horse just mentioned. You know, I think just thinking back, I guess, to make it easy for our, uh, tribal members that are listening today. It's, uh, today we get a lot of phone calls on the vaccine incentive, uh, on the. uh, on the ARPA payments that went out, when am I going to get it, uh, where's it at, did they receive it? Um, it kind of brings back to that point, uh, right now, as we're in this meeting, I'm getting text messages about, uh, could you check into my vaccine incentive? Uh, so again, you know, tribal members that are listening, you know, I guess what this, uh, Salesforce is, um, uh, presenting to the tribal council is, uh, making it much, uh, easier for the tribal members to have access even through their phone or through their computer to see where their, uh, assistance is. Maybe in the future, that's what this is going to do. And I think one thing is, you know, when you order a pizza, let's say from Pizza Hut or P- Domino's Pizza, you start from, they, they tell you when you first put your order in, where is it at? Uh, how many more minutes it's going to be and by the time it's completed, it'll tell you it's done for pickup. You know, that's kind of how I kind of envisioned this, you know, when we talk about technology, uh, and, uh, Ms. White Horse is saying, you know, we kind of need to get into that uh, mindset of, uh, of being where everyone else is. Right now, we're kind of behind and I understand that. Uh, I know our, uh, tribal members that are working on these, uh, incentives for our people, uh, working on the ARPA payments, uh, the school assistance, you know, we're utilizing our own tribal members to do a lot of this work for us. And, uh, based on the portal that, uh, was set up. But I think that we're such a large reservation and, uh, you know, we're running into a lot of things today that today we can sit back and say, okay, while we had these problems, those problems, and now let's try to make it much easier here for the future of our, uh, tribal membership. So they don't have to be waiting, they don't have to be asking. Uh, Treasure gets a lot of phone calls, he catches a lot of heat and so does the council. So I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from and, um, if housing is going to be able to pay, uh, part of it, there's still these other four applications that need to be identified as to who are we putting on those four applications? Is that going to happen today along with this, uh, approval? Or is finance going to come back with another four, uh, programs to put on it for start?
Um.
These are my questions, Cora.
It's not just four programs. We can put all of our programs on there.
On, uh, one app?
And, um, no, it's not one application, but on this app, this, this site, we can put all of our applications on there. They'll just have separate little links to the applications in the, um, in the site, just like on, on his picture there. Can you pull up the picture with, uh, applications on it?
Yep.
Bryce?
Here, please.
Bryce?
Yep.
It's, it. Yeah.
This one, right?
And it's not just those programs. We personalize it to our tribe. So, yeah, so say we put the housing application. Yeah, and, and financial assistance, medical, all, all of them can be added on there, um, Lee app. Um.
And, uh.
Housing.
And Councilwoman Little Hawk, um.
Job applicant.
What's, what's great about this too is you obviously clo- you see closed and open because, um, a lot of these programs are seasonal. Um, so when I log in, I can't access student code assistance right now because it's closed. So, um, your citizens aren't able to just go in and submit any application that is, that is closed. Um, so we can actually, um, have an open and closed, um, kind of like what Cherokee Nation does. Uh, because, uh, each application is, uh, is seasonal. Um, as well, um, with Salesforce, there's a pre-eligibility determination built in. So if I, um, I'm able to apply for rental assistance, I'll be able to see that application. But if I wait, if I make too much and I'm not able to apply for rental assistance, I will never see that application on my, uh, profile, on my citizen profile. So that's great about Salesforce too is because every application that's going to hit that department, let's say it's housing, they're going to know that that individual, um, is going to be qualified for that application.
Okay, so, you know, some of like our treasure just mentioned, the ARPA payments are pretty much, uh, coming to an end. Our vaccine incentives, so you're not going to go there with that because they're already set up to do that already.
Yeah.
I would say, uh, school assistance is kind of right now being, uh, uh, taken care of through the, uh, portal that they have, uh, put together, already taken care of. And so we're going to have to look at, like, uh, Ms. White Horse is saying, to allow you to do these other things. And housing itself, um, through the HHS committee would have to, um, you know, maybe would, uh, meet with you on the, uh, uh, like their CSVG or whatever else that, uh, they want you to do through the housing office.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we have other council members that have their hands up. Um, and then, uh, there's also going to be a robot that's part of this and it goes all over the place and, um, just kidding, so, uh, so, um, I said, I got Councilman, uh, uh, Yellow Boy and then Councilman Jumping Eagle. Okay, okay, Councilman Yellow Boy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I look forward to seeing that robot travel all over the place. No, I was kidding, um, I guess, uh, my first question, Bryce, um, you did send us the, uh, contract between Salesforce and Tectonic, correct?
That is correct.
And, um, so we do have that on record? Do you sent that to their secretary?
Uh, I sent it to the secretary as well as, uh, legal and, uh, I believe, uh, procurement, I believe.
Madam Secretary, do we have that contract? Bryce? Well, she's looking for that, uh, contract in her email, um. For the record, you have completed the due diligence for our tribe, correct?
That is correct.
You know, yesterday I was listening to one of our candidates running for president. And the gentleman brought up a very valid point and I, and I hear where Councilwoman White Horse is coming from. And a lot of us sitting here and I'm sitting here getting texts from individuals listening about how our tribe is still in the paper era where we're doing things on paper and we lose paper and we follow, we don't follow through because people call with our ARPA applications and well, we got to do it a third time, we got to do it a fourth time and we got to walk paperwork through and, and then we find that one of the offices aren't open and people make a trip to Pine Ridge and they come from Manderson or even Wambley to fill out the paperwork and, and you know, it's, it's time consuming and, you know, it's not a, it's not a, uh, it's not a, a secret that we're sitting here and we have stacks of paper in front of us killing trees as well, but, you know, it's time we move with the times. And I know we try to, um, do what's best in our, for our programs. And we do our best to what we can to help make things easier on our people. And so we've been at this for, gee, how many months now? Since May? April, May that we've been working with this program or working with this company or trying to bring this company in and trying to get things, um, try to get things working and I know, you know, Councilwoman, uh, Little Hawk Weston brought it up. We're, um, to work with the housing and I believe, uh, Bryce, you did meet with our housing CEO, correct?
That's correct.
And we did, you did have a good conversation with them?
Yes.
So I guess today, you know, we're sitting here and, and, and I've, I've heard enough. I've, um, and, and I guess I'm going to make the, uh, I'm getting another text to ask questions, but the other question is, you know, or others information that was just handed to me was maybe this will help out with our OLC program as well, our OLC college, to putting some information out there and, and utilizing the colleges uh, as one of the, one of the portals that we can have so the students can, uh, bring in or access it through their phones and everything, so. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve working with Salesforce and start the process of implement, implementation and also direct the executive board to negotiate the contract with a partial payment from OLLHA or OL, OGLA, the Code of Housing and the tribe. And also have Salesforce complete the due diligence application and once that is complete, bring the contract back for final approval. And also I want to direct the finance committee to work with the chief of staff to get a list of applications inserted into the website. So that'll be my motion.
Motion, uh, seconded by Councilman Rodriguez, uh, had a lot of discussion, so, um, any more discussion? Hearing, receiving, non, uh, secretary, will they call the vote, please?
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora White Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
How?
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
How?
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud? David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha!
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, council, I passed seventeen yes, one no and one not voting, thank you, council. Um, council, uh, thank you, Bryce, and we'll, we'll make sure we'll follow up, so.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
I think, Bryce. Um, council, only other thing I have, well, there's another issue that, well, two other issues, um. One was the uranium, the mining, they went to come and present, but we could figure that out at another point. Um, and I, I can connect them with somebody else because they were seeking some campaign funding, but I think I have some friends who could help them out in, in that realm, so that's the one in Fall River. Um, but if we, we might get a letter of support for them just to make sure that we do that. I don't know if, I'm not sure we did that already. I know they presented last time, but did, do you remember if they, we did a letter of support? We did, okay, so we'll, we'll get that going, so that, that's, that's the other one. And the only one was the employee raises, I wanted to bring that conversation forward. Um, I know that's been in finance, but I, I, we contacted the chief of staff and I, I'm not sure if she's ready with that or not yet. But I know that's been on the table, so, um, hopefully finance can get moving on that. But, you know, this conversation that we just had, um, is a way to save money and help, you know, put that back towards programs that could help with those finances, you know, those raises, um, Councilman Steele.
Yeah, I, I got a couple. You know, number one is, uh, we had these, um, this open site in Wounded Knee with, uh, um, where they found those bones, dislocated right there in the community. I mean, to date, we still have people monitoring the, the site there and, um, you know, we're not getting any kind of answers as to, you know, how old these bones are and, you know, anything about it and right now, it, it's still, uh, you know, open site where there's no fencing. You know, we, we really need to, to get this adjusted, I mean, um, I don't know whose office, but I know at one time it was under the president's office. Um, but I'd like to see that adjust. I'd like to see us, uh, get somewhere as far as fencing it. Um, and if possible, if we have to remove, um, transport, remove, uh, move some of those houses, you know, that might have to be a discussion because those, right where that, that new housing is behind the, the post office, it's probably right over a lot of bones. Um, people need answers out there, why wasn't, why wasn't, typical, um, were they involved before they moved the homes or were they ignored? You know, those are questions that, um, haven't been answered. But i- it's kind of disrespectful to think of, um, the tribe building homes on a, on a, um, burial ground. So where are we? I mean, what are, what, what is our plan? What are we going to do? Because we can't continue to keep it the way it is. Um, at some point, we do have to secure that whole area.
Um, so I, I, I think with that, we, I know that we did have that program under our office initially, but I think that moved over to day labor, um, with those, those workers. Um, and I know that we did put that bid out to, uh, I think it was, um, I want to say Mike in the fifth member's office, we did assign him that, that piece for that fencing. And then once they actually started to build the fence, they found those, the, some more and I think they were doing research on that. And that's what was last left off, but I'll, I'll follow with Mike in the fifth member's office and see where that recourse is at and trying to figure out what, how to, how to, uh, you know, give people some answers and don't let it delay, you know, because, uh, you know, there's, uh, a certain amount of time left in this administration, so we got to get something done right away, so we just make sure we could figure that out.
Yeah, and if we can get answers to where those, you know, they did take some bones, the feds, um, you know, where are those? Are they returning them? And, and if they could see how far back or how old those bones possibly are? I think those are some of the questions that were asked of me and, uh, I didn't have answers for them.
All right, yeah, we, we could find that and I'll get that to you, uh, as soon as I can, Councilman Steele. Thanks. Um, other questions? And council, uh, one other thing, I, I know I sent, shared this earlier, uh, but again, that's a confirmed meeting for the boarding school victims and families on October fifteenth in, in Rosebud. And, uh, we're, that's, I think it's going to be at ten AM, it's a Saturday, so that is a confirmed. And Secretary Holland will be there, um, so this FYI, make sure that if you have elders in your community that want to testify to that, um, that they get there. The only people that are going to be allowed to testify from my, from what I understand are the actual survivors from those schools. Um, and if they want to submit that testimony, so just FYI, that'll be October fifteenth. And I'm su- I'm sure that we're all invited as council as well, but we'll, I'll get more details as that comes around. And the other thing, and again, to Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman, uh, Steele's district, uh, the state of California recontacted me through email and saying that they did have actual, um, uh, I would say, bones from Wounded Knee. And I don't know how they got those, but, you know, they, they wanted us to submit a, 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 a form to re, re, you know, request those back to, from us. Um, I think this, they presented this item in two thousand and twelve, from what I remember. And I think I sent that to all council last night, so you might have got that form. But just FYI, that, that's, that's on the table too, so. Um, and the other issue that came up when we were meeting with the survivors, um, I think, uh, this past weekend was this, you know, figuring out who's going to go to Massachusetts and all that and to kind of represent those survivors, those ascendants, um, and so that's, that's that, so there's, there's been a few developments there. Um, but with that, is there any other items you want to report?
Motion to approve the president's report.
Okay, okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Dreamer. Uh, any further discussion, hearing, receiving, non, secretary, will you call the vote, please?
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Coral White Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
How?
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBray?
How?
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Julian Spotted Bear? Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha!
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Uh, thank you, council, uh, eighteen yes, one not voting, uh, council, again, I always appreciate all the support. Uh, it's been, again, like I said, a tremendous honor to work with all of you, um, you know, Uh, it's been, again, I said, a tremendous honor to work with all of you, um, you know. Sometimes we might not agree on some issues, but you know, for the most part, I think we've, you know, just been working in a good way, good direction. And, you know, I just appreciate everything that you all do and bring to the floor. And, and again, you know, this is basically gonna be, um, you know, we're not done yet, so we're not gonna lame duck this. So, gonna keep working, but, uh, at the same time, it is, it's always an honor to work with all of you, for people. Um, so thank you for that, uh, so moving on, uh, I think we did our vice president's report, we did the secretary's report. Um, the fifth member's report, did we do the fifth member? Approved it, okay, so treasurer's report, is that right? Okay, so we're at the tre- and we'll do one chat one, and we've got Dr. Jumping Eagle here too, so. Um, Mason, do you want to present your report?
Good afternoon, tribal council, I wasn't able to get the full report out to you guys, I'll get, I'm still working on that. Uh, it's had some issues with this school clothes and this other, uh, other stuff we are doing, you know, um. Yeah, you said it there, a- and then, um. So right now, I'm just gonna be asking if you guys have any questions for me and what, or want me to explain anything. Um.
Okay, Mason, uh, so you got Councilman Jumping Eagle, and then Councilman Cora.
Mason. Yeah. So, um, this, this is just a, 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 a question, do, do we, and I had, no, I asked this through finance. But, uh, there's also some, it's about the rodeo contestants that made it to the national final down in Vegas, we usually help them, right?
Yeah, we usually get a list from whoever at the, whoever it is at the, or whoever. Is designated to get that information for you guys, whoever the rodeo person is. Um, they usually get a list to you guys, and you guys usually help them. Uh, ranges from two hundred to five hundred, and I think even one time, you guys didn't have a lot of, uh. Uh, contestants, you helped them with, you know, seven fifty to a thousand dollars, so.
You know, Mace being that, you know, I'm an old cowboy and I made it to the finals myself, that I'll take it upon myself to, to handle that. Um, no, I'm just teasing, but I did get a list from, um, one of the, the, the family members. Of, of who all made it, and then also, do we, are we able to help? Because I know we have four members that, um, have stock that made it also. Do we, do we help with them or no?
You've done it in the past, yes.
Okay. Okay, so does that need council approval, or can you just, are you approve it or go through finance?
It, yeah, I guess it just depends, you know, if you give it to me, I'll, I'll approve a certain amount, whatever it is. Uh, most likely, they might not like what they, they want, want, they'll go take it to finance and, um. Or they might take it to tribal council, so that's, that's kind of up to you, I guess, you know, I don't know how many contestants you have, but I'll just look at. How much money we have and so forth, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass the list on to you.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Cora.
Thank you chairman, good morning Mason, how are you?
Good morning.
Mace, could you, um, give a brief explanation on the issue with the school clothes in Pine Ridge? Um, I've been getting text messages over and over on that, so if you could give, um. Um, the people a brief explanation as to why, the, why there was a holdup and what's, what's going on. So they have a better understanding, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, not, it's not just with Pine Ridge, it's with the, some of the other districts. You know, with this, this money that we gave out for school clothes, uh, according to the application, you were supposed to. Uh, uh, basically provide a need for that, and the questions on those applications. Uh, were pertaining to that. Uh, so on some of them questions, you know, some of the, the tribal members, uh, wrote down there that they. Basically, did, basically didn't need it, but they still put the application in. Um, so the districts, what they did is they went ahead and just signed it, approved it, and sent it over. Um, so we gave the district the chance to fix, fix that a- and send them back. Uh, some of the districts didn't, didn't even approve the, uh, list that they sent over. Uh, so we waited, waited for, you know, approve, something approved from, from the districts, and. It's not just Pine Ridge Village, it's, you know, it's a lot of the districts, so we had to sit down with them and show them, this is how this needs to be filled out. This is what this has to say, and then so what we did is made the managerial. Uh, decision to have to change those answers on those applications for those individuals. And just accept them. Um, so then we started just doing the approvals, uh, in the districts, some of the districts, I, like I said, didn't approve them. We end up having to approve them from our office here and make the changes to the spreadsheets as well as the applications. Um, so the village, I think we went and got some of the applications on Monday. Uh, they've already, from what I was told, they did a list, four listings of a hundred apiece, so that's a little over four hundred and something that they did. Uh, I did send you guys a list of the, uh, uh, off reservation ones. And, uh, that's just the, half the list is what I was told, I have more, uh, from the off reservation. And we're just, we're getting more, uh, you know, for, from, from the girls that do it, so. Just to clarify too, it's a separate office that actually, uh, and they're, they ain't doing the approving now. You know, the districts, according to the ordinance, approves the list, approves the, approves the, uh. Applications, and all we do is just make sure they're tribal members and, and whatnot, making sure they're, they're in, you know, in school and everything's turned in. Um, and that is the half of the workers that we have set up for the enrollment portion for the ARPA. So we had four, four, I guess.
Mace, the second part of my question is, is this too? Now, there shouldn't be any checks cut from any cap office until those are approved in. Through your office and the check is sent to that, um, respective cap office, correct?
You're, you're right, uh, I, I've been getting, uh, uh, I guess, some reports that some of these districts are actually approving. Their own list, uh, without them sending over the approvals for us, they're cutting the checks to those individuals. And then, you know, cutting the checks to, to them, of course, without getting the, the check from us. Um, a- and that's, that's nothing on the tribe, you know, it does say in the ordinance, you have to wait for that money to come. But some of them are jumping the gun and actually making those checks out, uh, to those individuals. Um, which, which is, which is a no-no, you know, it's a big one, you know, what if there's someone that's a tr- not a tribal member? Or, uh, didn't apply, or maybe they're not even in school, you know, that type of stuff, and they, they gave them the money. Um, you know, it doesn't seem like it's too much, two hundred here, two hundred there, but it. If you get too much from them, you're gonna end up having to, you know, pay this money back because it's not, hasn't been approved. Um, so yeah, you're right, there's, there's some of the districts that have been doing that.
Okay, thank you for that, the last question I have is, um, say the students who are pending enrollment. Are they, are they, um, being assisted? Are they being denied right now? What, what is, what is happening with those that are pending?
Uh, so according to the ordinance, you s- you said tribal members have to, you know, and then can get this. We have, we, we have the applications and we haven't turned them away yet, we're still waiting to see if they get approved of. There's a whole batch of, uh, people that just got approved of not too long ago, and I don't know if all of them are in there. But we, uh, we didn't deny any of them, we're just waiting on the approvals from the enrollment to approve those individuals for. Uh, enrollment to the tribe, and then once they do, then, uh, we'll approve them.
Okay, Mace, um, what, what, what exactly, or what is the process that the districts are using? To process their applications, are they going by a specific date? Are, are even those who apply online, what, what is ac- what actually is being done? Do you, do you know, or are you aware?
So what do you mean by date?
When, when the application was submitted, say if they were submitted the first day, are they the first ones to come through? Or how, how is that process, are they, or do you have any input into that process as to how those applications come through?
So on the district side, you know, I don't have any, uh, input on how they approve or what. How many lists they send over at a time, I don't, uh, you know, I gave them a suggestion of maybe putting in a, a hundred at a time, whatnot. Um, I don't know how they're approving all of them, uh, I ju- I just know that we followed the ordinance, they approved them. Um, I'm hoping they do, maybe do a first come, first served, uh, I don't know that exactly. But for our off, off reservation in the portal, we've been just doing, uh, uh, first come, first served. At your number four on the list, you'll, you'll be the fourth one to get approved. And I did, like I said, I sent you the list of what was for the off reservation, and that's how the le- uh, checks went out on that list. Um, so what I'm hearing is that there's like people on list number one, uh, way down, you know. Ninety, ninety, um, ninety-one, ninety-two, uh, got their checks. And then list number, whatever it was, to two hundred, they've gotten their checks, we just sent a new batch out, I think, yesterday. Uh, the stuff that we got Friday, Thursday and Friday, and just to clar- clarify too, we don't wait. Till Friday to send checks out, we don't wait for, uh, you know, Friday for any applications come in. As soon as the applications get done, the girls start doing the verifications. And then they bring down vouchers all week to pay, uh, districts and, and whatnot, so. Um, I don't know where the rumor came, say that we're only waiting till Friday to cut checks out or do it, you know, do new checks to the districts or anything. That's not the case.
Then my last question is, um, say if a family submits a group of six applications. Is there one check cut for that, that whole family, are they, are these checks still coming for each individual? I mean.
No, one, it's one check, sorry, one check per, uh, uh, family, let's say. You know, I, let's say I have six kids, I applied for all six of them, I got, I'll get the check for, you know, for one, one check for all of them. Um, but there are, are some individuals that applied for maybe two of their kids. And then, um, this just happened the other day, because I seen the duplicate check, I thought they were getting double payment, but they applied for two of their kids. Uh, like a week ago, and then all of a sudden applied again for the other two kids. And, uh, there were two checks and, but there's, there were duplicates, just that they didn't have the documentation for their second set of kids. I guess at the, at the school or something, so.
So I, I guess I don't know, do they, what's on the application, as I don't have any kids in school. But, um, is it just one application and they list all the children on that one application?
Yes.
Okay, just wondering, because one of the other things are the concerns I got was that. There was just a cutoff regardless of if you had eight kids as to four kids. Um, that there was only a certain amount they were going to help with, but I was, I was told that. Once those applications went up to the ca- uh, to the enrollment office, they were separated from each other. So some people receiving, say, four checks, then, um, two of the children didn't receive their checks. Because they were separated up there, and so I guess there was a few people upset over that. But those two checks would still be coming for those two individuals who wasn't on the first one. So I kind of wanted to explain that a little bit too, but thank you, Mace, bye.
Okay, um, any more questions, if not, I have to explain a couple of things.
Uh, hold on Mason, uh, Councilman Steele.
So Mason, do you guys have an exact number of, um, the children that are pending enrollment? That haven't received a school clo- clothing application, because some of these kids, we know that are bound to be, um. Tribal members at some point, however, you know, it's not fair that, you know, their siblings are receiving that assistance and they're not. And some of these kids are, are really, you know, young and, and it could help them buy a pair of shoes or a jacket or whatnot. But because of this, uh, ordinance in place, we're only able to help enrolled members. Um, is there a way you can get us a definite, um, number of children that, that, um, are still pending? And having, uh, enrollment or, uh, uh, application filed?
Yeah, I just, uh, text the girls and ask them if they could get me the, uh, amounts and, uh. Send the spreadsheet over of who, who they are, I guess, I don't know if you want that list, but I could get the amount, uh.
Well, I, I'd like to see that, so that way we could see if there's, you know, another way around to help those individual children to. To receive that same assistance.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll get the list for you guys.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilman Steele, um, so any other questions, go ahead Mason, just if you want to finish your report.
So, uh, something came to head yesterday, uh, so, you know, we have certain deadlines, uh, for this ARPA funding. One of the, 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 uh, uh. Programs we have is, is the capital fund project. And with that capital fund project, it, it's basically a, uh. You know, the technology, uh, based project. Uh, I, I sent some of you guys the, how the, the, the. How the program's supposed to go, uh, and then the, uh, uh, finance actually. Uh, put me the oversight of the, uh, um. I don't even know the name of the, the project, but it's the, the broadband project. And so when there was a, uh, when there was a, uh. A project that came up, the, the E N B D committee actually stopped the project. And told the, uh, oversight, the guy Bo White, which is the oversight to not either apply. Or a different way of applying, or I didn't get the full, uh, uh, gist of it. Um, the deadline was September thirtieth, we were, uh, but they since extended it to October seventeenth. Um, so one of the things is, you know, if we're gonna go ahead, if we're gonna miss that, and. I need, I guess, I need to know, I need to let treasury know that we're not even going to apply for that. Because it is part of the reporting requirements for our, our ARPA funding. Um, uh, now, when you apply for the, the ARPA funding with these new projects, you have to have a detailed. Um, plan on, on what's being spent and what you're gonna spend it on. And so that, you know, that's one of the things that I guess. I, I, I need clarification on if I'm not gonna be the oversight of it, and E N B D goes back to the chief of staff. On being the oversight, our council, I have no idea, uh, you know, I just got thrown in the middle of this, and I've just been working on trying to. You know, do the best for the, the, the project, but was not having, uh. Not being told what, uh, what's been going on, you know, that's kind of a, for me, it's a big deal, you know, it's. To me, it sounded like that the, uh, lawyer for, from my end was making a decision for the tribe, telling either the E N B D committee. Or, uh, those employees, you know, do it this way or do it that way. Um, you know, I, I, maybe it's something that, uh, needs to be clarified within the council here. Uh, who the oversight is, if you can take me out as the oversight, if you put some of the outs in there. That's, uh, it's gonna be up to you guys, but, uh, just need clarification, um. And I hope you guys could do that today.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Dreamer, and then Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Um, Mason, this is George, I know we didn't stop, could have stopped to nothing, um, but we, we, but we did recommend that E B and D be the oversight. And under Leslie Mastiff and Bo White and them to go after them, two grants, we true for council yesterday. So as far as I know, we've been working on this, um, grant, this re- uh, reconnect, uh, grant also. So, as, as far as I know, everything's moving forward, um. So I don't know what are, if, hey, you have anything that needs to be addressed? Because I know things have been going pushing forward.
So, and it's not really, for me, it's just, you know, I, I need to be let, let, I guess, I. Made aware of everything, I guess, of what's going on, um. So I did get the email from Mr. White yesterday, is that the chief staff told him that he just needs to report to E N B D. Uh, her, Leslie, the lawyers, and the, the company that's helping. Leslie, the lawyers and the, the company that's helping, but I wasn't in that loop, you know, for some reason, even. Uh, you know, I have no problem if the E N B D's oversight, I don't have a problem if the, the treasurer's the oversight, it's just. Maybe you guys just need to clarify all this, so everybody knows their roles in this. And so we don't get mixed up on, on who's approving this and who's approving that, um. You know, I, like I said, I'll stay either step away or we'll keep going, but that's up to you guys to decide that.
Um, good, uh, Chairman Steele.
Um, yeah, if you, if you, if you still, I mean, if you wanna be involved with it, then, and you know, we got no problem with that either. You know, just um, just we had a, the, the weekend, we had a meeting on, uh, two-day working session on it, so. Um, if you still to be, if you wanna be involved, I mean, we got no, we have no issue with that either.
Alright, thank you, so I got a couple of hands up, so uh, I got, well, I'll go with Councilman Yelgoy first, Councilman Jeff Eagle. Councilman Little Hawk Weston, and Councilman White Horse, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, sounds to me um, that there needs to be some clarification, especially coming from the E B and D committee. Um, and trying to figure out who's gonna be calling the shots, cause it sounds like. You have the E B and D committee making decisions, and then you have the chief of staff doing directives. And I can understand where Mason's coming from is, who's he listening to? You know, is he listening to the chief of staff, or is he listening to the E B and D committee? So I think that clarification needs to be um, had and made. So that way, we're not running into this problem. Because for one, I think if, if we're gonna have E B and D committee be the oversight, then that first, that committee should just be the oversight. And not having the chief of staff poking in and giving other directives to Ms. Mastiff and Mr. White. And that way, we're not sitting here ass- and having our treasurer ask these questions as who's gonna be the oversight. So, I mean, that's, that's my concern or my, my issue. As to making sure that, that line of communication is clear. So that way, we're not sitting here and, and having this conversation again, cause I think uh, again. There shouldn't be two bosses trying to run one program, thank you.
Alright, thank you, so I got a couple of hands up.
So let me, let me just clarify some things though too, you know, this is a good project, you know, we did get uh, money for it. Um, and it's, I'm glad that we're moving forward, and I'm not territorial. At all, I just need to know which, which way I need to uh, go, you know, um, if it's. If, a- and again, like, it's up to you guys, we just need to. Uh, a- and the reason why I bring that up is I, I was brought some invoices. One, one of the invoices was that one of the, uh, I don't know who the person that approved them. Actually told Mural Net and all these other guys to come down uh, during whatever it was. Uh, I, I think when we had that ceremony, all the other stuff, and then they ended up charging us for, for them coming down, when, when. You know, I didn't know we were gonna do that, we, we paid for, we don't, I, I, as far as I know, we've never paid for actually these companies to come down and. And sit with you guys and, and, and whatnot, if it was a meeting, yes, that's. That was set up by the tribal council or, or something like that. But, you know, it, it's a lot of money, it's almost eleven, twelve thousand dollars for all these individuals to come down. And then it wasn't in the actual contract to pay them, but now that they incurred those costs, we have to actually pay those. And I don't know who gave the approval, uh, so that's the reason why, you know, something like that needs to be clarified, it's. It, it, it's the possibility of become a, a, a question cost if it wasn't in the project or if it was in, in the contract. Uh, so right now, I have uh, Dean, I'm looking. Uh, where this, where we can either charge this either to the program, or if it's gonna be have to be charged to general fund.
Alright, thank you, um, so I got uh, Council, Councilman Jeff Eagle. Next, or I think he took his hand down.
Oh, no, I, I, I do, I do check.
Right, Councilman.
You know, yeah, thank you, you know, I, George pretty much answered what I was gonna ask, but you know, nowhere that I remember. Have committees ever had that authority to, you know, take people off of a grant and have them quit working on it, right in the middle of. Of them working on it, we don't have that authority to be a supervisor of a grant. Know what I mean, and this is, this one, this grant here sounds like a pretty big, pretty big grant, and uh, and, and it's a good thing, so. I just wanted to make that statement that nowhere do we as committee or committees have that authority to. Have anyone stop right in the grant, right in the middle of it, or anytime, in anytime in the process, thank you, Chair.
Alright, thank you, uh, Councilman White Horse.
I had my hand up.
Oh, go ahead, uh, Councilman Little Hawk Weston, then Councilman White Horse.
Thank you, you know, I think that uh, the treasurer's uh, right, we need to uh, maybe clarify that. Process, because um, I think E B and D might have oversight of the, the project. But at the same time, we still need to uh, uh, understand that, you know, we need to have one uh. One entity here, you know, uh, in, overseeing this project. But at the same time, we don't need a lot of bosses within it. You know, uh, and we do have, it sounds like a couple of uh, directors. That are uh, helping with this project, and I don't know if Mr. Bo White is a director. But if he's uh, on there along with Ms. Mastiff. Uh, she's a director of a tribal program, and so I don't know if the chief of staff is the reason why she's involved in it. But I think we need to clarify that uh, process, and I don't know if we should clarify it today or just clarify E B and D committee. But the treasurer's right, you know, he needs to be uh, included in this so that he does know when these uh. Vouchers are coming through or whatever is financial, that he understands, uh, oh yeah, this was, uh, this is okay. I, you know, it can go through, but if he's not aware of it, then um, we're left uh, with what he's saying, you know, a big. You know, a big uh, item there that we have to pay out. So I think that we just need some clarification, so if E B and D's the one, I think we need to make sure that E B and D is the one. But as long as uh, we can clarify that, uh, cause I do know that uh, Leslie. Uh, has been really working uh, very hard on this with the um, committee along with others. But now, um, you know, we need to include the treasurer because it comes in on the financial side. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from, uh, as one of the E B and D members.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, Councilwoman White Horse.
Thank you, um, you know. The whole reason that finance took that action to put the things, the program under Mason. Under his oversight was because of that direct issue that Mason was talking about. There was some huge expenditures that nobody is owning up to authorizing. And when it comes down to it, Mason is responsible for doing the reporting. That was why finance committee took the action. And if I, I didn't understand why. E B and D and apparently they didn't take action to tell somebody to not apply for that grant. Tell Mr. White to not apply for that grant, but this project is huge, it, it's, it's huge. And we need to make sure that we're consistent with whoever is going to be the oversight. And we need to ensure that the treasurer is made aware of the actions. Because he is ultimately responsible for reporting this, on this money. So however the council wants to do this. We need to, number one, make sure that there's one. Consistent oversight, whether it be the committee or Mason. Or if you want the chief of staff. And number two, that the treasurer is informed of the actions. Because he has to do the reporting. So I think a decision should be made today, but I'll leave that up to council. This, this is a lot of money and this project is supposed to benefit our whole reservation. So we need to keep it moving and we need to ensure that we stay within the guidelines. So however you want to move, then I think we need to move in that direction. So maybe to ease Mason's mind, there should be a motion.
Well, motion then.
So who do you guys want in charge, do you want E B and D or the chief of staff or Mason?
I think it should be the E B and D, but also with Mason.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Alright, then my, my motion will be to have E B and D be the oversight of the. The project. And that the treasurer be informed of all financial actions. On, on the program.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, so motion made, so there's some silk, some questions or comments, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman, or Vice Chair. Younglin, and then Councilman Carl.
Yeah, um, thank you, Chair, at the uh, uh, the E B and D meeting, we approved. The, the technologies company, which we turned into an LLC, to continue and reapply. For the reconnect and also for the tribe to re- to reapply or apply for the grant as well. Um, being two separate entities, but the same entity, if you wanna call it that. But yeah, we didn't tell anybody not to apply for any grants, we told them to apply. For them, since the deadline was moved back to the seventeenth, so they can get that done and in right away. I just wanted to state that for the record, that we did, we told them to move forward with the grants.
Alright, thank you, um, Councilman, or sorry, uh, Councilman Younglin, and then Councilman Carl.
I think uh, E B and D was planning on having an emergency meeting tomorrow, um. Do you guys still wanna do that, or you just go with this motion that's been made, okay?
Right, uh, Councilman Carl.
You know, we're all aware of, of the great benefits that, you know, this broadband can bring to the membership. And especially, you know, we identified three areas that, you know, we're gonna have a concentration on. On the path forward, you know, Wakabamani Lake area, Pine Ridge and Porcupine Towers that are controlled by the tribe. But I think, you know, we could go ahead and run this motion, but uh, it's imperative now. That we have an emergency meeting with E B and D, Mason, um, Leslie, Bo. Everyone involved in this project, so that there is a clear understanding of everyone's role. It's my understanding too, that, you know, a lot of those inferred, or those costs that were presented to Mason now. Were done by individuals that are no longer part of this project. And, and you know, they overstepped their bounds when they did a lot of this. And, you know, corrective measures should have been taken then, but now we're stuck with them bills, but. You know, I think tomorrow, we, we discussed among the committee here that we should have a. Emergency meeting with all the individuals involved and get proper clarification so that. You know, there's no misunderstanding in what we've said and we actually said to apply for those grants.
Uh, thank you, uh, so there's a motion on the floor, any other further questions, seeing or hearing none, Secretary recall the vote.
Um, Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
To me, it sounds like maybe um, Mr. White misunderstood when he said apply for the tribe. Or have the tribe apply for the C P F grant. Does, does that, maybe he thought the tribe is supposed to apply and he's not. But if he's in charge of the program, should I put that clarification in my motion that he apply for the C P F grant?
I, I think so, that.
So, you know, uh, we've already been ordered the money. Uh, the money's there, uh, we just needed the plan.
Okay, then they should prepare the plan, correct?
Yes, I gave that to Mr. White last week to come up with the plan. And then that's when he informed me that he went to E N B D and they were gonna reapply, do something, or not apply, I don't know what. What ended up happening, but all I'm saying is that we've already received the money, I let him know that. Uh, let Mrs. Hughes know that as well, uh, the money's there, we just, we planned for it, and I remember I did send you guys. Uh, what template for that plan is, you know, it's, it's just all mostly, uh. Um, you know, buying, buying uh, phones. And, and remember I told you that's how the other companies sitting around here at the tribe, uh, giving away phones, giving away uh. Those type of things, that's the same project, uh, they got their funding from the state.
Alright, uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, uh, to my understanding, it's the reconnect grant that we discussed, which is uh. Along with this one too, that needs to be applied for, that they're currently applying for. So it's two separate grants, in fact, it's not just one grant that he's talking about the money's being there, because that grant. Is still in the works, but it's the reconnect part.
Correct.
You wanna repeat?
No, that's.
Okay, I'll fit it right, and thank you.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions?
So, so can I add that, that clarification, that the plan for the C P F grant must be submitted by Mr. White?
Yes.
And he can work with Mason on that.
Alright. Okay, so, uh, any other questions, seeing or hearing none, Secretary, call the vote please.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora White Horse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Mocking Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
C.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella John Carlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Pastor Seventeen has to know, uh, thank you, Council, uh, Mason, uh, you're still on your report.
Okay, um, those are basically all the. I, uh, you know, one of the things we, we talked about in finance is getting a, a new auditor. Uh, working on that, uh, remember the auditing firm that we had basically just quit on us. Uh, told us they can't do the audit, um. Uh, we don't know if we have to RFP it out, or just use the second uh, person we, uh, that was selected. Uh, we, we did contact the second uh, people that, that were selected and didn't sound like they wanted to uh. Do the tribe's audit and, I don't know if they were just outing or, or what and stuff, but it might come to a point where we need to advertise it. Uh, and then go, go from there and stuff, but. Uh, that's just something that, I don't know why the, you know. Uh, I don't, it's something that's happening all over the United States, is that these, these auditors are quitting some of their firms and. Some of their cli- clients as well, so it, it causes a big ripple effect for us, basically. Um, you know, we barely got our nineteen done and wasn't the fault of the tribe, you know, it was the fault of the, the auditors not. Getting out here and doing their work, so. Um, so as soon as I get clarification from uh, the new C P A firm that's coming in. We'll, we'll have a plan for council and bring it to you guys to uh, do the audits, so.
Uh, Councilman Carl.
Thank you again, Chairman Mace. Um, at this point, do you think it would be wise to just go ahead and make the motion? To go ahead and advertise for it for that? I mean, once again, they're gonna come at us and we're gonna be penalized for this. And I sure hate to see us be put on high risk, you know, there's already um issues with B O R, et cetera. So, you know, I, if you feel that we should do that and make that motion today. Um, please, please let us know, cause I I think that's something, you know, that's that's a serious issue and we need to get that. That done ASAP. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and just if one of you guys make the motion to go ahead and advertise for accounting services for the tribe for the next. I think we do it every five years.
I'll make that motion.
Start advertising.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Yellowboy, Councilman Dreamer, and Councilman Rodriguez. And and to include auditing services, okay, okay. Um, any discussion, hearing or seeing none, Secretary, call the vote, please.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle? Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still?
Yeah, yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Pastor Seventeen, it's uh, thank you, Council, uh, Councilman Yellowboy.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Motion to approves, uh, is it second or? Okay, second by Councilman Carlo, uh, Councilman Carlo, go ahead, question.
Basically, one, one, one last question. I keep saying that and they're laughing at me back here, but. Um, who is security under? Who's over security?
Uh, I don't think we ever cleared. I thought it was the vice president at one point. You know, Tom used to be oversight of them. I actually don't know who goes securities uh under.
Huh? No, just our tribal security at the tribal office. Um, one of the the reason I'm asking is because some of the programs. Who have offices um down the street and around that area feel that um tribal security isn't doing their. Um, walkthroughs during the day. I guess there's some incidences that happened with um. I I I don't wanna say on the air exactly what it what they were, but um I did get calls and text messages in regard to that. So um, being that you're in town, maybe you can um get a hold of Donovan and let Donovan know that. They do need to get out there and make those patrols, those foot patrols or however they do it to make sure that. Those offices are secure in in that area. Thank you.
Sure, I'll get a hold of Dean and and whatnot and see and ask Donovan who he reports to. Um, I actually never thought. I always thought they were under the the president or vice president. I didn't know that, but.
Maybe it's a, maybe this would be a good time for um Donovan to start giving. Or or maybe he does, I'm not sure. Maybe he gives a report to the Law and Order Committee. I don't know, but um. Maybe this would be a good time for him to maybe start giving a report, whether it be a monthly report to the. To the Law and Order Order Committee or wherever he's under, whatever program or committee he would be under. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Um, I I I think we need to take action. Or assign Mason to um meet with legal on um. Beginning the process to sue our current auditing firm for breach of contract. At a minimum.
Second your motion.
Okay, motion. Okay.
Okay, motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Whitehorse, seconded by Councilman Yellowboy. And Councilwoman Carlo. Uh, Secretary, when I call the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Pastor Seventeen, four zero, yes. Um. So there is a motion to approve, I don't know, you missed your motion, but. Um, yeah, yeah. Uh, so there's a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Is there there a second it? Um, further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, Secretary, call the vote.
This one is to approve the treasurer's report. Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Councilor Pastor Seventeen, it's nineteen four zero, yes, thank you, Council. Um, so I know that we're at lunch. Right now, uh, uh, Councilman Still?
Just real quick, hey, um, a question for Mason. Mason, uh, what's the status on getting that um building for um? Um, um, Dan, Dan Clifford out to the um ranch for. His um catering services.
You know what? I I'm eating his food right now, so it's pretty damn good. But uh, you know, at la- last I heard, uh, I thought Steve was supposed to write up the the um. Approval, I guess, or the the contract and it was uh as far as I know, everybody has the go ahead, but. I think we're just waiting for Steve or somebody to do the contract, as far as I know.
So is that something you could push through? Cause he's been waiting for a lo- lo- a long time now.
Cora, can we have Steve uh push it? Or somebody, somebody that can get all the Steve?
Yeah. Yeah, I can call him after when you guys go to lunch.
Okay.
I have a a question for the treasurer president before you break for lunch.
We're just, we just finished the report, so.
I know, but I the couple of items we needed to ask.
Well, can you call him?
Yeah, well, let me ask him first. On that, we are gonna have that under your agenda item.
Uh, what was it, Councilwoman? Oh, I know what. Yeah, 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 go ahead. That that was good. Okay, I remember what it was. Yeah, go ahead.
Let me go ahead and ask that?
Uh, go ahead.
Well. Yeah, I'll go ahead and call you, Mason. Mike, I'll call you.
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, okay.
Uh, just to uh give you context, it was a copy of the financials for the fire department. They needed that to apply for the USDA grant, that that's it.
The preliminary um, uh, the balance sheet, Mason, I think. That has to be less than ninety days old, but again, you're talking about the the firm that. You know, is no longer there? Is that gonna kind of hurt that?
You know, uh, we we got a uh, an accounting firm that we're just waiting for signatures, I think, basically on this now. Uh, and then they'll be in to uh do the, start with the tribes uh preparing for the audit, so they're basically doing what the. Mr. Peterson Peterson was used to do and stuff, so we're just kind of waiting on on that again. I think we're just waiting on the contract signatures. And we're ready to for them to come down and make a plan on how they're gonna uh get us prepared for the audit and stuff, so. That that goes along with what they they need to do for us.
So, once they do that, we can get, they can get a copy, I guess, of the balance sheet? Is that what uh, cause that's what they're needing is according to the president for to uh with the USDA. USDA is waiting for that, plus the twenty twenty-one financials. They said even if it's in draft, draft form. They said they would uh go ahead and go with that too.
Yes, they they would be able to do all that stuff for us when they get here.
Okay, so maybe, could you give us like a target date? Like, when do you think? They can get that?
Like I said, we're just waiting for signatures. Again, it falls back. Fears to to finalize it, uh, finance had finance and council already approved the contract, but we're just waiting for. Uh, uh, Steve Gunn to finalize it, and we've seen an email back and forth between uh Steve and the company. And as as far as that, the last one I seen is they're both just waiting for signatures now and hopefully they get down here right after that.
Okay, so I'm I'm assuming, well, we'll get back with you, but a couple of weeks, maybe?
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Okay, so President, did you hear that?
Yep, yep, we'll 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 follow up in a few weeks, Mason.
Yeah, so we'll do that then. Okay, Mace.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So we'll be at lunch, uh, uh, everyone, so this, we'll be back at two. Thank you.
Recording stopped.